Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller? Rosado? Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Simone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have twelve out of fourteen.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, second on our agenda tonight is reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the BAT recording. So if you do come up and use the mic tonight, make sure to adjust it to whatever height you are. And let the record reflect that Alderman Miller has joined the meeting. Item number three is approval of the minutes for November first, twenty twenty-two, and November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, special call meeting. Anybody have any corrections, comments, anything on either one of those? Then can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sofa, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Simone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
And Chantet?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next is item four, which is items to be removed, added or changed.
We would like to add an executive session this evening for collective bargaining and personnel.
Okay, so then that will become item twenty A. Executive session for personnel and collective bargaining. And no action after that.
Correct.
Okay. Got a motion to accept the change to the agenda for item twenty A, adding an executive session for personnel and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sofa, second by Simone. Roll call, please.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Simone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
And Chantet?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next then would be item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Yes, yeah, it's on there. Hey, nobody online? No hands? Okay. All right, then we will move on to item six, which is ordinance twenty-two sixty-three, annexing thirty-four West eight eighty-five Sunset Drive, oh two South three forty-six Hart Road, and oh two South three ninety-three, two South three sixty-three, two South three forty-seven, two South three sixty-two, two South three seventy-six, and two South three ninety-two Meadow Drive. And I see Scott is already up here.
Yes, hello. These are the last few properties that have been surrounded by the city with various annexations that have had, have taken place in the last several years. We had sent letters to these and several other property owners in April of this year asking for annexation. We did have a few months ago several of the properties voluntarily annexed. And so these are the remaining eight properties that have not been annexed, and they are surrounded by the city limits. Most of these properties are on one or more utilities from the city. The city is maintaining most of these streets that are in or adjacent to them, with the exception of parts of Meadow Drive, which would be annexed and taken over by the city as, as a city street for maintenance. This is just another one of the annexations that we have been proceeding with over the years. And this would close off another donut hole of surrounded area in this vicinity.
Okay, and do we have the utilities available for everything, so if anybody needed to?
It's a variety mix. Along Meadow, we have water and sewer available. We have electric along Sunset, and then on Hart Road, we only have water. So it's, it's a mix of them.
Okay, so then if somebody needed to repair septic or anything, that would still be covered under county, and they would handle that through there?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Good question.
Nick? Go ahead.
In the listing, you highlighted all these addresses. There's a lot of lots around there. Are, are these the only ones in that photo that aren't annexed? At this point, are there some to?
There are some to the north that are, that have not been annexed along Chilum and the very north end of Meadow. Those would be something that we would be addressing at a later date. But those, those, this, the only area we're, we're looking at is the area that's primarily south of Sunset, the remaining parcels in there. Also, one other thing I should note is, since we sent the, sent this, you know, final notification on this one, we did have one petition annex from one of the property owners. One of the property owners has obligated to annex because of an annexation, but we did not receive a petition for annexing from that property.
Any other questions from everybody on the council? Do you want to comment on this from public? If you want to, just come up, make sure the mic, so we can hear you, so the public can hear you. And all we need from you is your name.
Hi, my name is Laura Cuevas, and I'm here with my dad, who he does live on two S three sixty-two Meadow Drive. So I wanted to kind of reach out, and I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize in advance. But essentially, I wanted to ask if you guys have considered the financial burden that this will bring about. Some of the residents who have been there have been there for a long time, and that is a reason why they are hesitating. They don't want to move forward with the annexation. They've been comfortable the way they've been living, so my question is, have you guys considered that? Why is this something, you know, I, I understand you guys are wanting to kind of move forward and make it part of the city, but really, that's the main thing, is have you considered the kind of strain it may put on them, how it'll affect them, or anything like that?
Typically, when we've done this, and I've actually talked to a couple people that we've done recent, it's typically a couple percent that the change is when you add the city to it, because you lose the fire protection district, I think it is, and then you add in the city, difference between the township and the city on the tax bill. You can always talk to the assessor to make sure that you have every exemption for somebody on that property, and you can also contest the assessment through the assessor's office. And then depending on age, you can also sometimes freeze the taxes on the property, so that they don't go up.
Okay, now, my other question would be, are these properties allowed to say they do not want to move forward with this? What are the steps we can take to stay off being the city?
Scott, do you want to help me with that one?
Under statute, when a property is surrounded by the city limits and under sixty acres, there really is no recourse. The city has the one, has the decision of whether or not to annex property or not. So, you know, I know some people do not want to be annexed for various reasons, but there really is no true recourse if they're surrounded and following the state, state statute requirements.
Okay.
One other thing, if I may add, one of the things we found, besides the fire district, there's two other things that come into play with the financial aspects of things. One of them is the fire district, because the property would be in the city limits. That then gives us ISO rating of one, which may lower their insurance rates. They'd have to talk to our insurance carrier about it and see if that would actually be a benefit to them or not. The other is garbage. We've also heard that the garbage collection in the unincorporated areas has become much higher, much more expensive. Because we're on a general contract, a lot of times, that's actually lowered people's cost for garbage.
And you can make it simpler, because you could just use a container, and whenever it's full, then take it out.
Right, and the recycling is included.
Same with recycling.
Right.
So yeah, I think one, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is, it's not like we're trying to double somebody's taxes or change completely the way their property is viewed. One of the things, I think, if you talk to a Realtor, when they want to sell that property, it makes the property more valuable if it's part of the city rather than a township property, because of all the services that are available to it. Even if you don't have city water, city sewer, city electric, it does make it more valuable to have those available to it.
Okay, so the other question would be, what would we have to add on then? So what utilities would be in addition to, so like my dad, for example, they've had the well, they haven't had the city water. So he just recently added a pump, literally, like yesterday. So my question is, how does that impact him?
None of that would change. The only time that would change would be if, say, you had a septic system fail, and you had sewer available to that property, then you would have to, for the King County ordinance, you'd have to change over to the city at that point, if there, if there was a failure of any of the system.
Laura, could you spell your last name for the secretary who's taking the minutes?
Yeah, so it's C as in Charlie, U as in umbrella, E as in Edward, B as in Victor, A as in apple, S as in Sam.
As you can tell, I spell that quite a bit. Thank you very much.
We're at two S three four seven Meadow Drive. I just had one question, if there was any chance of us getting any streetlights or sidewalks?
And Cheryl, could you spell your last name, too?
D A U K S H A.
Thank you.
Scott, you want to answer?
I'll defer to Gary on the streetlights issue. That's, that's probably something that, over time, as they take over, as we take over streets, we will, you know, look at and evaluate that. Sidewalks, typically, we've, we've put them in when, as part of our hundred-year sidewalk program, you know, when it's warranted and when it meets other connection areas to town and to schools and parks. So I wouldn't see that happening immediately, but, you know, if the neighborhood would like to have sidewalks, they could always petition and request them to be installed as well, so.
You would have two, two new aldermen in the future that you can talk to them about that.
And just generally speaking, streetlights would depend on the availability of electrics. Sometimes in these unincorporated pockets, there is no city electric. Obviously, we couldn't install streetlights if there's no electric available.
Alan?
Yes.
On the note of sidewalks on Hart Road, I know we've annexed a lot of Hart. Do we see putting sidewalks in to connect all of Hart anytime in the future?
I would say sidewalks on Hart are probably a higher priority, because we know that there are some linkages and missing gaps as to when, I'll defer to Gary as to what that's going to be on the sidewalk plan. But we have had some concerns about that, especially when there was the accident not too long ago, so
Yes.
I would see that as being a priority.
And that's a section, I believe it's on, going to be on the east side there, where it would connect.
Correct.
You know, there, it's already starting to come north from where the bike path is that runs down towards the school. So that would be the natural, I think, the natural side to go through there. Plus, I think it's a lot easier to get through that side than the other side of the street at this point. Dan, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your remark about the perceived value going up. I'm not a Realtor, but working with clients through the bank, there is a perception that a property that is incorporated has a higher property value to it in general. That's what my clients have told me. And then also regarding the sidewalks, I know that there are some neighborhoods that don't want them, there are other neighborhoods that do. And I've had residents ask me, well, it's expensive to have to put a sidewalk in. Yes, it is, but in cases where it's near schools, we certainly are opening ourselves up to save school grants and whatnot that help us defray some of those costs, and that is certainly where the priority is.
Any other comments? Okay, and this will be on the regular agenda.
We work on the night.
If we put this forward tonight, okay. Then I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance twenty-two sixty-three, annexing thirty-four West eight eighty-five Sunset Drive, two South three forty-six Hart Road, two South three ninety-three, two South three sixty-three, two South three forty-seven, two South three sixty-two, two South three seventy-six, and two South three ninety-two Meadow Drive.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sofa. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Simone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you. Scott, do we have a, a letter, anything we send out after the annexation that also lists who their aldermen are and what time our meetings are and everything, so that they?
We haven't gotten into the aldermen and the meetings, but we could add that.
Okay, I, I just think that whatever information we can give people once they've been annexed and And the other, I think the good thing is, I've definitely heard it about the garbage service, where people are searching for a garbage service and trying to find a better option, because a lot of it has gone up extremely high.
Significantly, is what we've heard.
Over the last year, so, okay.
Yeah, we can add that to the...
All right, thank you. Next would be item seven, which is Resolution 22127-R, Plaid of Abrogation for the building lines of Nagel Farmstead Subdivision, Unit 7B. And that is Joel Swanson, applicant. Good evening, Drew.
Good evening. Yes, city staff has been working with Joel Swanson, who's the owner of 641 Maves Drive. This is actually, when the subdivision was originally platted, it was a corner lot, but the city vacated Nagel Boulevard, which would have continued north in about 2003, and removed the roadway. That was after the flood control project, or the stormwater pond area to the north was built. Basically, the road was vacated in 2003. Eventually, in 2008, the easements were recreated, or vacated and recreated, to reflect that this is no longer a corner. But the building line that was on the original plats for these eight lots were on the, or remained in place. So Mr. Swanson is looking to build in addition to the east side of his property, or to his building, or to his residence, I should say. And in order to facilitate that, the building line would need to be addressed, because otherwise, it says that, basically reflective of that corner situation, that there's a corner setback there rather than the current day zoning allowance. So this action, the approval of the abrogation, would remove the building line, not only from his residence, but with the concurrence of all of his, the other residents within the subdivision, or property owners within the subdivision, it would remove the building lines on those lots as well. So the other owner that would prospectively be affected by this would benefit. So the Plan Commission did review this at their last meeting, and did feel it was appropriate. They did note that in the past several years with subdivisions that they have reviewed, that the recommendation has been to remove building lines, because they do create an added administrative issue of having to follow both the zoning line or setback areas and the building lines. So they did recommend approval of that, of this plat, by a vote of 6 to 0, and staff does recommend approval of, recommend approval of Resolution 22127 as presented tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I guess the one thing I would ask is, this will affect the other lots on there as well, correct?
Right. So all of the properties have a building line, most are just a front building line that is reflective of the 30-foot setback that is currently, currently the zoning setback as well. However, under, with the building line, we have certain encroachments that are allowed in the front, like a front porch can extend across a building line, or across a setback line. So those properties would also benefit by this. But primarily, it does address the corner lot, which really affects Mr. Swanson's lot and his neighbors.
And if we didn't change this, they'd have to come in for a variance to be able to do anything, or they just wouldn't do it?
Right. They would need basically relief under the subdivision code, basically asking for a subdivision variance for that building line. The action that Mr. Swanson and his neighbors are proposing is a much cleaner version, where it gets rid of it, basically, and in future, if somebody is surveying the property, it would come up in title and so forth, so.
Anybody online have any comments, questions? And I will make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 22122, oh, I'm sorry, 22127-R, Plaid of Abrogation for Building Lines of Nagel Farmstead Subdivision 7B, Joel Swanson, applicant. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
All right, thank you. Put that on...
There can be...
They can go on consent, so put that on consent agenda, okay. The next item is item eight, which is Resolution 22122-R, awarding Gateway Improvement Program grant funds to John Wazio Jr., property owner at 950 West Wilson Street.
All right. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Before you have Resolution 22-122-R, where we are waiting to award a Gateway Improvement Program grant to John Wazio. He is going to be basically with the 2,800-square-foot new construction ground-up orthodontic clinic at 950 West Wilson Street. He's going to be doing a series of projects there, dealing with HVAC, landscaping, fire sprinkling, plumbing, and so much more. With this project, he'll be investing about $1.6 million into it, but of that, our eligible improvements would include $58,855, $55,000. And that would include, again, landscaping and hardscaping that is covered under the GIP grant. Basically, we are looking for council to approve the Resolution 22-122-R, award a matching GIP grant to John Wazio Jr. in the amount of $20,000. But before we do that, I'd like to provide an opportunity for John himself to come up and share a little bit about the project, and a few other things he might want to share with council. John?
Hey, Alan. I have to excuse myself from this.
Okay, sure.
I just want to see if, first of all, my name's John Wazio, and I just want to see if, I don't know if anybody has seen some of the elevation, actually. Again, my name is John Wazio. Been an orthodontist here in Batavia for 23 years, and I purchased a practice from Nick Gordon in 1999, and he was in Batavia as an orthodontist for 17 years. So this orthodontic practice has been in Batavia for approximately 40 years now. A little over 10 years ago, I purchased this piece of lot on Wilson Street with the intent of growing or expanding my business, and just, from time to time, just with the economy going up and down, and this project was supposed to be done way before COVID hit. And then, so we kept hitting the brakes on this, and every time I started this project up again, it seemed to get a little more elaborate, a few more square footage was added onto it, you know, all sorts of costs, including landscaping costs and hardscapes, everything increased quite a bit. And my pre-COVID budget has exceeded by over 20%. So this is just the sign of the times, and inflation and everything that's going on with all the shortages of supplies. But what I'm just asking for is everybody to just take a look at this and see, you know, if you guys would consider, you know, offering me this grant to help offset just a little bit of the cost of what I've incurred with this project. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions as far as what I have presented there, or the landscaping itself, but I just wanted to come up and just talk and just say, this has been a long project, and I'm hoping that you guys would consider helping me out with the $20,000 grant for the landscaping and hardscaping.
Does anybody have any questions, comments about it? I guess the one question I would have is, where this is located on West Wilson Street, how far back are you going to set it in off the street?
I think it's 50 feet is...
50 feet?
Is what...
Is that the minimum that we have on that property from the street, or...
I don't know the exact number.
A little further? I was just wondering if there's any way to try to keep it closer to the street, closer to the sidewalk, wanted to hide more of the parking behind the building.
Parking behind the, there was some extra landscaping that was put in, in the parking...
Just to add more of a street front there along that section of it, to get that, because I know, like, at the corner, the buildings are closer to the street. If there's any way we can do that when we're laying this out, even if it leaves a more room in the back.
Yeah, actually, I believe it's actually only 30 feet, because the, with some of the revisions, the, we had some modifications that were required as part of the zoning approval. So I'm pretty sure it's pretty close to 30 feet after discussing with Drew. So it's pretty close to where the front setback line is.
And then I guess, since I don't have plans in front of me, what is there, what are doing with stormwater, is it on the back of the property, or...
There's a best management practice that, I think it's a bio-swell in the back.
Okay.
And permeable pavers.
Pavers, okay. Good, because that was something I was going to say. If that's true, then I'd like to make sure we tout that when we, when this gets done and gets built, that that's part of how this was done.
Right.
Because I think that's really important, that we take any step we can that is within financial reason to make that a different way to do it.
I have a more complete copy of the plans here, if the board wants to...
I can, staff can send it to me, so I can see it.
Okay.
That's the comments I would have on it.
Is this right next to the auto parts store, then?
One lot over, there's an empty lot there. I think it's the only empty lot on that section.
It would be immediately west of the...
The car wreckers office. And then you have the daycare center that's just to the west of that.
Yeah, and there's going to be another lot that's going to be in between there that is, well, right now, it's up for sale right now, and we're looking to see if we could bring another dental office in there, but...
That was approved as a prior subdivision, the council approved recently.
And just, the only access is off of Wilson Street.
There'll be a unified access for both of the lots at the main driveway.
Oh, okay, so they'll use the same entrance.
Just one driveway.
Okay. That's good, less pavement. Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any idea when you're going to start construction?
If, we may be starting the water and sewer as soon as this week, they may be doing that, and then March 1st for just the rest of the project.
Okay.
Does this mean you're going to consolidate offices, then?
For, I have a lease, looks like by March 1st, I'm going to be out of my Batavia location, and I'll have to temporarily move my patients to the St. Charles office. It'll be a little inconvenience, because the project's been taken a little longer than I was anticipating, so, but that's what the plan is. So as of right now, it looks like I'm going to be in my space until March 1st. But I have the other office, which is only seven miles away.
Just as convenient. Been around there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments? I'll make the motion that we recommend a council awarding a Gateway Improvement Program grant funds to John Wazio Jr., property owner at 950 West Wilson Street. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Okay. And we'll put that on the regular agenda, so we can at least talk about it. It's quite a big investment for that section of that street, I'd like to at least talk to, talk about it. Okay?
Thank you, council, and thank you, John, for coming out.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is the long-awaited discussion on city entrance signs. Gary?
I'll need to share the screen there.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
This is the point in the meeting when the people online will regret not being here to see and feel and look at stuff.
I did share on the screen the city's entrance signs. So the city is currently, has two entrance signs under construction, and as part of the construction process, council had desired to bring samples back for your consideration. So I'm going to take a few steps back. If you recall, we decided, we debated many designs, but we've decided on this final design, and the final design as a base bid included the single-sided aluminum sign panel and a limestone base, and the base bid was in the brown color. Alternate bid products or bid materials were a pre-cast concrete sign panel, a cedar wood sign panel, a foam craft sign panel, an HDPE sign panel, and then there is a faux stone foam craft veneer base. So those alternates were all bid with the contract as well. Aaron Stokel from Aurora Sign is here tonight to present the various material samples, so that you can see them, and the goal of tonight's meeting is to decide on the final materials as well as color. Again, the base is that aluminum sign with the stone, the stone base, the base bid is the aluminum sign with the stone base. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to walk you through the various samples, and then we can have discussion.
Gary, before we get started with that, can, I think it also bears mentioning that the way that the sign is planned to be constructed, the top could be removed and a new top could be put on in the future, so that we don't have to remove the entire sign if we so wish in the future.
Yeah, it's envisioned that the stone base is permanent, but the sign itself could be removed a decade, or whenever we rebrand the next time. We enjoyed the branding process so much, we want to go through it again. So whenever we rebrand, we can...
Long as you do it at least five years from now.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Aaron Stokel from Aurora Sign, appreciate your time. As Gary alluded to in visual shows, well, we do have a chosen design, and we're here to discuss colors and lay, colors and materials, rather. Without further ado, I'm going to work my way down from the bottom, alternative five, number five, foam craft bid, and basically discuss some of the materials here on hand, and some pros and cons, and of course, as a sign professional hired on the job, my unsolicited opinion as to what is the best that moving forward. With additional examples of color to come, I do have a larger one. I'm the only one with visual aids, and I didn't want to stick by the microphone. How would you guys recommend these get dispersed or passed?
Get your microphone.
Oh, terrific. Fantastic. Thank you.
You can walk around now.
Thank you, Gary. So what I can walk around the room here briefly, and you guys can pass as desired. Grab one blue, one brown, if you could. So what you're seeing is not the highest quality spray for a sample, but of course, color is the component here. Do take note, of course, that this is on, these samples do happen to be shot on a piece of eighth inch, which is 125 aluminum. That is the base panel material for the base bid. Please take note of its dirtiness. The copy is separate, but I'll discuss that a little more in detail when we get to that item. Alternative five is a foam craft stone veneer to match the color and texture of limestone veneer. Foam craft is a company in Atlanta that creates signs like these, and I'm holding my hand, but much bigger. This is kind of a micro design, of course. Sure you've seen signs like this, whether they have a brick base, or whether they sit directly on the ground. The material itself is a foam, hence the name Foam Craft Materials, is kind of a cut section of it. And this piece that I'm holding, of course, is a textured brick. It's made to look very realistic, but emphasis, of course, on the foam core component of it. They are exterior grade. They are exterior grade. My unbiased opinion is it's not as sturdy as it could be, it will stand the test of time, but in terms of impact and any sorts of abuse, it falls a little bit lower on the scale.
Has it just got like a fiberglass coating on it?
Yeah, so this.
Under side. Coating or something on it that's on the outside?
Yeah, these, you can kind of see the open core cross section and where they seal it off.
Okay.
You benefit, of course, from having a solid base on here, it's not going to be suspect to landscaping, weed whackers, things of those natures. Unfortunately, if these do get exposed, they can become more of an issue, but they are a valid option, we do, there is a time and place for them. I'm not a huge fan of using these. Gary, obviously you just mentioned, you know, make sure we don't rebrand in the next five years, reference decades down the line, my goal is to make sure these are the signs here for decades. Moving upward into alternatives two, three, and four, I really kind of want to group those together, those are essentially what we call sandblasted signs. Alternative five is an HDPE, also known as an HDU, high density urethane. Foam craft, of course, is the same material we just discussed in the previous models, and alternative two is again the same fabrication method but out of cedar. Cedar is very similar to the two signs that you have currently in the rough locations. Cedar's a very durable product, many of our houses are wrapped with cedar siding, if you keep them sealed, they'll last for a long time. It's still a component that's susceptible to breaking down a little quicker than I like to see. The finished product is much like that P example, I'm passing around, and this is just a raw piece of HDU, it's basically the raw material. So again, an engineered product meant to stand the outdoor elements when properly maintained. Working backwards down to the base, of course, the foam craft product is made to be a veneer. I like this product, but the bid includes a pretty substantial concrete footer that really is an enormous waste if you're not utilizing it for the real stone materials on top of it. You could value engineer a lighter weight sign to be put into the ground simply with auger and steel pipe, so I'm quick to kind of throw this over my shoulder for the base itself. Actual limestone layout is much like this sample I'm unveiling for you. There are two types of limestone, they're both from Wisconsin, two separate foundries. The layout is much like the sample I'm holding in my hand in terms of once it's installed, seams of course closed with mortar. These loose panels would be installed in the same variety, but if you'll notice, there's a bit more of a neutral color tone to them, the difference is just different locations in Wisconsin. One's a Fond du Lac and one's a Halquist. I would recommend more of the natural, the neutral gray color scheme, these tend to get some burgundy's and some yellows and even some greens sometimes too, but keep that in mind when we choose the blue or brown color scheme. Again, working outward, apologies to lump, alternative two, three, and four, they're really the same sign execution, but different materials. Any questions thus far? Moving upward to, towards our base bid, we have alternative one, which is a precast sign, is exactly what it sounds like, I'm going to set the, yeah, it's got some weight to it, I was going to put the microphone down otherwise.
You're good.
So the example that Gary's going to walk around is a quick. As we move upwards towards the more sturdy solutions, in my opinion, Gary showing off just kind of a small sample of some precast, a precast plaque, this is an insert into an existing sign, the upper portion of the sign that sits on top of the base can be made entirely like what Gary is showing. Furthermore, when cast, we can even tint this concrete to come as close as possible to match those blues or browns. It's a very natural process, artistic liberties are requested, this isn't an auto body shop when it comes to tinting concrete, and of course, as you can see a little bit as he walked around, there can be an aggregate exposed once you acid wash this and the final materials are finished, so the colors can, for the lack of a better word, wander a little bit in a process like tinting concrete. It can be done to visually look like the designs we have, it's a very, very sturdy option. And last but not least is our base bid, I'm going to unwrap this real fast. Going to make Christmas out of it. So what Gary is showing off now is the base bid, these are quarter inch aluminum letters, and they're what's called pin mounted, three quarter inch standoff off the sign face. This cabinet is, the top section is one foot deep, this execution offers some depth and some dimension and some shadowing as well with the letter stood from the face. Quarter inch aluminum letters, again, aluminum can corrode over time, but it's not going to rust, it's not going to break down, and it's coated 100% on all sides. This is the majority, at least, materials of what we build at Aurora Sign, but we're not, of course, foreign to any of the other materials as well. I do support this as the base bid, as I think it'll stand that test of time. Further, to option if we do change the branding again in the future, this is value engineered as a face replacement in the future, so not only would 40% of that top section of the sign still be reusable when the face swap, it absolutely could change the entire cabinet in case of an accident or anything else that happens too as well too, so it is very modular in nature. Any specific questions as I go into details of my world and not overwhelming you guys with it all?
The logo, would that just be like laser cut out of the aluminum, and then is it powder coated or?
Great question. Yeah, so what you're seeing right now is it's a acrylic polyurethane, it's provided by a company by the name of Matthews, we call it, it's the Cadillac coating, they basically make coatings for the sign industry as a whole, it's what they make for it. So all these coatings are meant to be outdoors, they're clear coated, they're going to fade like any paint will over time, but like I just spoke as recently with a customer last week, how fast, or how often they should put in their budget to repaint or resurface them, anything less than 10 years, assumption to reface them or to recoat them in the field is very, very premature.
Questions?
Just to add some more information for council's consideration, I've got the numbers. So I, in my opinion, the first one is a fairly easy one to discount, make a decision on, sorry, I should say. The base bid, natural stone versus the faux foam craft, the cost difference, total cost differences now is what I'm going to be speaking in, is $2,000. And for me, for $2,000, it's a non-decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Go with the natural stone.
The maintenance on it, the natural weathering of stone compared to weathering a plastic coated foam product, to me, doesn't even make any sense.
That, I thought was an easy one. I'm not going to go through all the numbers for all the various sign options, I'll turn it back over to city council, if there's one or two or three options that you guys want to talk about, then I can give you the differences between those options and the base bid, but I'll let you take that.
Okay, who wants to start, Mark?
My only curious question is why would we get limestone from Wisconsin when we have a bunch rate in our backyard?
Previous conversation had requested it be made or be found sourced with the hardest material possible, and we do just that.
The limestone we have here, especially thin limestone like that, does not last. I have limestone borders in most of my yard, and they're just crumbling after 10 years. I mean, literally, it's gravel now in some spots.
Fair enough, didn't know that.
Yeah, it's very soft.
Yeah, very different.
That's why when they made buildings, if you look at the lentils on the old windows that are in town, they're a foot tall.
Yeah.
That's how they make it last, is it had to be huge, that's why the pyramids last forever.
They're from Wisconsin.
They're just big giant chunks.
Agreed.
Yeah, so then the only other comment is base bid, brown.
Yeah, okay. One brown. Tony?
Yep, the raised lettering, I'm assuming that the welcome to and all the lettering would be raised.
That's correct.
Yeah, like that, and then the logo, the windmill there, is that raised or is that same idea?
Great question, yes, so that icon, the windmill on that left hand side, as we view the drawing, is raised. When scaled to proportion, you see there's a lot of detail in there, so everything brown currently shown in color on that windmill icon would be raised the same way these letters are shown today here on these standoffs.
Okay. All right, so then the white is the background.
In the case of the icon, yes, the white is the background and the icon is either the blue or the brown.
Is it possible to do the brown on the sign part and blue on the, yeah, where the river is?
Hundred percent.
River's.
If that's what's desired, we certainly can.
That was going to be my one question, could we do one color in the middle of that? Is the river different? I know, I know. Was waiting for Gary to throw one of those stones at me. Okay, who's next?
Oh, yeah.
Pull your mic up, Abby.
Forgive me if I missed a detail, is the raised lettering, the raised, is that the base bid or is that an upgrade? That's the base bid, thanks.
In terms of that raised lettering, is there any concerns about, maintenance wise, about stuff getting in behind it and causing problems? I mean, I just see that as possibly, possibly something that can rise.
Sure, sure, yeah, great question, and absolutely, you know, you could get items behind there, they are, they're soundly secured to the face, there's aluminum threaded rod underneath those concealed standoffs to make it look nice. Anything more than, you know, tree leaves or anything that would kind of blow in and blow out, perhaps a bird's nest, something to consider, absolutely.
I would imagine these will be something that could easily be power washed a couple times a year, and we probably want to get them power washed, they're going to be right next to major roads.
Yeah.
And so they'll get road grime and stuff, so they'll probably need to be cleaned.
The power washing's not going to cause any problems.
Not to mention the fact that our streets crews, when they're out driving around, if they were to see a bird's nest in one of our entryway signs, I'm sure they pull right over and take care of it immediately because they just take that kind of pride in the presentation of our community.
And depending on how it's landscaped around it, they'll be near them.
Right.
Once a week, so I think, yeah, the possibility of something being there, but it's also, we take care of them, they last. Anybody online have any comments or questions? Color preferences? What does everybody think about a blue stripe for the river? Blue?
I like the two color.
I'm, if all of them, Serone just said stick with the one that's.
Two colors.
That's what I agree with. I think you introduced blue, it's going to start to get really almost cartoony.
Right, that's the word I was going to use.
Yeah, I like the brown.
I like the brown on the whole part. Okay, I think we have an.
Winner?
An option that we picked and we're happy with it, we're not going to change your mind tonight.
Base bid, brown.
Wow, I like it.
So moved.
Tonight's a discussion, okay? But you know what, you know what our thoughts are, and let's move forward with it and get the stuff going, and for aluminum prices go up.
Love the real limestone.
Yeah, as well as the limestone.
I stopped sharing, so you should be able to share.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will move on to item number 10, which is resolution 22119R, authorization to purchase a, an A9 monsoon SE street sweeper from RNOW Incorporated for $323,552. Alderman Malay?
Yes, yeah, the current sweeper's from 2007, I think it's in the budget to do, replace that, there was bids from Elgin, two from Schwartz. All, the low bid or most of them are under budget, the monsoon being the one that's being selected is a different, what did I read in there that doesn't have the true vacuum, the whirlwind? I'm sorry, Gary.
No, you're good.
It has fewer parts that can wear out, basically.
Yes.
And so it makes sense to go with that one, it's within the budget, and is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think, as I read that through there and I saw that you use air pressure instead of mechanical brushes to move the stuff, probably a better design and certainly easier to maintain. Have we ever had one like that, or we always had the brush style?
Always had the brush style, I know.
Yeah.
Back in history, because that technology is, well, since 2007.
Yeah.
I will, if I can start, and I'm going to start with a question that inevitably is going to come up, that's not in the memo, but I think it's a really vital question to ask. This past summer, I had the opportunity to go to the American Public Works Conference and on the exposition floor, they have all sorts of technologies for public works officials, and street sweepers, electric sweepers specifically, are rolling out to the industry. Right now, the capabilities of electric street sweepers are not sufficient enough for how we use our street sweeper, simply the runtimes on those are just not long enough for how we use our sweeper. I think it's a technology that's coming, we're just not there yet in the industry, they're only really a couple of years out with the electric street sweepers, so we're investigating every time we have the opportunity to do that, and we feel it's a good idea, we will do that, I've told several of you, I think the meter pickup trucks, the electric engineers, sport utility vehicles, the engineers pickup trucks, those are all going to be great first opportunities for electric vehicles when manufacturing can catch up, because right now, manufacturing is years behind, so. Our heavy duty vehicles such as a street sweeper, such as the snowplow trucks we'll talk about in a little bit, electric just hasn't caught up to that, to that use yet, use case yet. Back to the discussion, so this is a regenerative unit, so it does use a compressed or blowing air to the suction tube as opposed to brushes. By moving forward at this time, Scott explained in the memo, we are actually going to save surcharges which are anticipated to occur after January 1st. RNOW has worked with us in order to absorb some of the cost of the increases, as well as then by moving now, we can eliminate another increase and secure a spot in the build process. Obviously, we're doing this in 2022, it becomes part of the 2023 budget, we'll be real lucky if we can get it in 2023, we may be very well still talking about this in 2024, but we're moving forward, we want to get this up and going. I wanted to cover those items, and as Scott says in his memo, this is actually a Sourcewell pricing, although in order to avoid the surcharges, we need to buy directly from the vendor, not from Sourcewell, Sourcewell would be no requirement to waive bids, buying directly from the vendor does require us to waive bids, so when this comes to council, it'll need to be on the regular agenda to waive bids, but it's the same pricing as Sourcewell, and we are recommending to move forward with resolution to purchase it at $323,552 from RNOW.
So do we need to do two motions tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay.
When it comes on the agenda, you will though.
Okay. One question that just dawned on me, how about the volume of this type of, how does that compare, noise wise?
Oh, volume, noise wise, I meant volume size wise, size wise, it's roughly the same size as ours existing today, that's a good, that's a technical question, I don't know the answer to, but I will, I can tell you that, I will get that answer.
I'm just curious, because.
We don't want to wake up.
I can hear the current machine coming.
Yeah, you don't want to wake up every neighborhood on the block, so I will ask about sound.
As I say, then we have to make sure we follow our ordinances and don't get out there before.
Well, that, there's a discussion on.
I understand why it has to be out there, in some spots it has to be out there to avoid traffic.
Yeah.
I totally understand that.
And during league season, those couple of weeks during the season every year, we are out earlier because we're fighting daylight and we're fighting potential snow.
Yep.
The rest of the year, yes.
Yep.
So Gary, you mentioned the electric, just not quite there.
So Gary, you mentioned the electric, just not quite there yet, the way we use it. It's because, the way we use it is because we're trying to keep stuff out of the Fox River, which gives us, there's a monetary gain for us on that, right? The way we, or I don't know if it's monetary, but it's
In the context, what I mean is physical hours that we're using.
That's what I'm saying, but we run it so much because of the clean waterways, isn't that, I remember a thing about us, the way we sweep the streets and you said something about
It's technically part of our MS4 permit, which is the stormwater, keeping things clean and out of the waterways, yes.
Okay.
Part of it frankly is just our level of expectation of service and the fact that we keep the streets clean so that we can subsequently keep our sewers clean. We run it in the downtown on a regular basis in order, again, a level of service and aesthetics downtown, trying to make sure things look clean.
Okay. Thanks.
If you had a use case where you could run this machine for, you know, three or four hours a day in order to clean up your shopping center parking lot or, you know, and you could go back and charge it and then at the end of the day, you run it to another client's parking lot and that, that works in those types of scenarios, whereas we're out nonstop.
That's gonna be my question, is how many hours a day does that run?
Electric one?
No, I mean, how many hours a day does our
It's a full shift.
Ours.
So we run a full shift and up to 10 hours a day during
Hours a day with it.
During the long days, the leaf collection days. Because they start with the leaf, they will fall right behind the leaf crews.
Right. And I was gonna say that, that I can't imagine that they have anywhere near that amount of runtime on an electric one.
Not without recharging, of course.
Right.
Leah?
This question actually applies to all the next ones that we're talking about, vehicles. These are replacing current vehicles, correct?
Everything we're talking about tonight is replacing current vehicles.
So are we able to sell our old ones off or what are, what will be
So how we do that is we actually auction off our old vehicles through a service called Public Surplus. And historically over the years, we've gotten really good bids for our vehicles on Public Surplus. One of the ones that we're gonna talk about tonight, the engine no longer works, so we're not gonna get much for that. The engine's shot in that truck. But besides that, some of our large dump trucks, we've gotten really good pricing for, considering they're 20-some odd years old.
Well, part of that is because there are places that one can't afford a new one and couldn't wait three or four years
Nowadays.
To get a new truck.
But I didn't even talk in history.
Right, right. It's still, it's a value, you know, if somebody can get one and only spend half as much maintenance money on it as the 30-year-old one they had, it makes a lot of sense to buy those.
Scott was talking this morning, our sweeper's currently kind of rotting from the inside. So it's a 2007 model and is at the end of its life here. We need a new one.
Anyone else? No discussion? Seeing none, I would move that we recommend to council, Resolution 22-119-R. Authorization to purchase A9 Monsoon SE Street Sweeper from RNOW Incorporated for $323,552.
Second.
First and second, can we get a roll call? First, motion by Malay, second by Solfa. Roll call, please.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Inayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next is item 11, which is Resolution 22-120-R. Authorization to purchase two 2023 Ford trucks from Morrow Brothers Ford for $106,581. Alderman, Malay?
Yes. Again, two, replacement for two vehicles, one for sewer and water, is an F250, replacing a truck from 2011, so substantially, you know, over a decade old. And budget of $55,000, this one's coming in at $48,878. The second truck is for the electric division, is an F350 to replace a 2009 truck, even older, and which is out of commission with a major engine issue, as Gary mentioned. So replacing that with a cost of $56,700, or $703, which is slightly over the $55,000 that was budgeted, however, the other one was under, so overall, both are under the $110 that were budgeted. Anything you needed to add, Gary?
Just again, on the electric topic, this is an F250 and F350 chassis, both of which are utility bodies, so they have the storage on the back of them and other tools on the back of them, and they'll both be equipped with plows. So unfortunately, right now, electric technology doesn't match that criteria. Ford does have the 150, which is the trucks I mentioned earlier where the use case works. And I think eventually Ford will get into the heavier duty pickup trucks, but just right now, they don't even exist. So we are moving forward with the traditional versions of these vehicles. As Scott indicates in his memo, at this point, there's no guaranteed commitment by Ford until we at least submit this order. And even then, it's most likely that we will receive these vehicles in 2024, and there's a possibility we don't get them till 2025. So that's, that's just reality right now.
Yeah. And then Gary, both of these, they'll use the existing service body?
Yes.
Get transferred onto the new truck?
We actually use a local Batavia vendor that takes the old service body off, repairs any hinges, broken, broken parts. If they need to, they'll repaint it, which, which most times they, that is needed after 10, 15 years, and then they put it on the, on the truck, the new truck.
Okay.
We've done that process several times.
All right, so that's probably a significant
It's a cost savings, yes, definitely.
Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, knowing what I know of where their production stuff is right now, even GM is sitting on 200,000 trucks that are built but don't have computers in them. Ford's got 175,000 of them, and I think in Michigan alone, that are sitting in fields that they park trucks in, that they can't finish. Which is, to me, is just insane that we can't build our own chips and build our own computers.
Yeah, that's becoming. Okay, seeing no other discussion, I move that we recommend to council, Resolution 22-120-R. Authorization to purchase two 2023 Ford trucks from Morrow Brothers Ford Incorporated for $106,581.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Ewer. Clerk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Inayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to zero.
Okay, I'm gonna put that on
Consent?
Consent, because that's, we don't need to be
The other one, we need to waive the
Yeah, that'll go on a regular agenda. Okay, next is item 12, which is Resolution 22-121-R. Authorization to purchase three truck chassis from Rush Truck Center, not to exceed $345,000.
Okay, I have this one too. The, so the, it's for the purchase of three, three trucks for, for public works. The, the budget was for $230,000 for 2023, but as we can see, the delays in manufacturing, in fact, these are for 2025-year models. I think if I understand this correctly, it's about taking advantage or planning ahead now for the delay and what we expect to be able to get three. We were gonna do two now and one in, or actually, one now, one in '24 and one in '25, is that correct?
We're hoping to get a little more buying power by going out with three at once.
Yeah, and knowing that we're probably not gonna get them for that time.
No, we're not gonna get them anyways.
Yeah, so it makes sense.
Couple of things with this one, we were a little disappointed. The Peterbilt chassis is what we had been transitioning to. Our last couple of purchases were on the Peterbilt chassis. We simply cannot recommend that cost difference. Obviously, with three trucks, that would be another $90,000. So we are recommending the International chassis. As Scott indicated in his memo, we won't expect to see these until the fall of '24 or early '25. And the fun with the heavy-duty chassis like this, given the current marketplace, vendors are seeing larger buyers come in with a higher bid and swipe out orders from others. So just because we put in an order doesn't necessarily mean we'll even get the trucks if somebody outbids us and wants to steal the trucks from us. So it's been, it's a crazy market right now.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, the Peterbilts that we've had, are they better maintenance-wise than the Internationals?
We think they will be over the long run. Our Peterbilts are only a couple of years
Years old, okay, so they don't have enough mileage on them to really know and trans, that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. As I was gonna say, even if, if they were that much better, because I know several people I know that have Peterbilt box trucks, absolutely love them, but they've got 200, 300,000 miles on delivery trucks.
We're not to that point where I can stick my neck out far enough to say it's worth it for $90,000.
All right, so you're saying Peterbilt's better, but not 30 grand better?
Right.
I think if the price becomes more in parity again in the future, we will certainly be recommending to continue with Peterbilts, but we cannot at this time.
Any questions, discussion?
Gary, I'm just curious, how long, how many years do we hope to get out of trucks like this? I mean, are we looking at years or mileage?
No, we look at years. So the trucks that these are replacing are typically nowadays, they're probably in the 17, 18, 19-years-old. It used to be we would be replacing around that 15, 16-year mark, but reality is, we're several years, two or three years farther than that now.
And how old are the ones that we're replacing?
These will be that, these will be that 17, 18, 19-years-old by the time we replace them.
And we expect to get, you expect to get something for those?
Yeah, you will still get, you will still get, the example I used earlier, and this is now three or four years ago now, we got like $12,000 for, for one of the ones that we, which really isn't a bad, considering it was 15-year-old truck. Now we'll be selling a 17 or 18-year-old truck and, but you never know, the market right now is
Yeah, you still get the same money for it.
I can't tell you what we're gonna get them for in this market.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Seeing none. I motion, I move that we recommend to council, Resolution 22-121-R. Authorization to purchase three truck chassis from Rush Truck Center for $345,000.
Second, Ewer.
Motion by Malay, second by Ewer. Clerk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Inayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to zero.
Thank you. Up next is item number 13, which is Resolution 22-128-R. Authorizing purchase of two police interceptor vehicles.
Again, moving on with more vehicle replacements, this is for two 2023 Ford Hybrid Utility Police Interceptors, and under budget by approximately $10,000, if I understood correctly. Is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'll just explain why it's under by 10,000. So we usually use the Suburban Pricing Cooperative, that's who we've been using for a number of years, and we were waiting for prices to come in from them and have been told they're not gonna have vehicles available until 2024. So went out, looked at some of the other pricing cooperatives, found Morrow Brothers, which Public Works uses as well from Southern Illinois. They do have vehicles, they were able to get us some pricing. That's why it's coming in as far under as it is. We were told initially back in August, September, when we were planning on buying the vehicles, plan on at least $10,000 more in costs for the next year's model. So fortunately, I don't think it was as high as what we planned for, which is great. So I'll also say that as far as our outgoing cars that we're gonna be replacing, we're gonna be using these two vehicles that we're replacing. They're currently in a patrol fleet, they'll become a part of the administrative fleet, investigations fleet in some fashion. The two cars that we will be surplusing, the good news is, if the market continues to be as healthy as it has been for used cars, we're getting anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 for these used police interceptor vehicles, so, which is way better than what we were getting for the previous Crown Vic models, so. And then this is gonna be our first, these will be our first hybrid model, so we're, you know, excited and looking forward to seeing how, how these turn out and just kind of looking at what the modeled savings are as far as on fuel costs as well as CO2 output. I think it's gonna be a positive thing for the city, so.
Yeah, I was very glad to see that and I'd like to, you know, be able to look at some data and, you know, after a year or so on, on what kind of savings there was from that. I know I've had a hybrid for seven years and I've spent half, half as much as my wife does on her car, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, Ford has done some research and I can send you guys some, some information that they have comparing the gas-powered versus the hybrid for the 2021 police interceptor, if you're interested in taking a look at that.
Yeah, let me see it.
Okay.
Questions, Leah?
So if I'm understanding this memo correct, the uplift charge is in addition to
Correct.
The budgeted amount.
Yep, correct. So I think we have budgeted around $115,200. That includes the vehicle, the taking out of the old equipment from the old squad cars, putting it into the new squad cars. It also includes the decaling on the outsides of the vehicle. One of the, the costs that's making this higher this year is our light bars that are in our vehicles, they're anywhere from 10 to 15 years old. They're, some of them aren't even LED at this point, they're starting to break down, they don't make parts for these light bars anymore, so we're gonna have to start replacing these. What we will do is, as we take the, these two vehicles out of service, we'll actually salvage the parts off of the outgoing light bars, hang on to them and use them over the course of the next four or five years as we, you know, put these brand-new light bars on. So the cost usually isn't that high. I think it's $3,000, $350 for new light bars to buy them from a separate vendor, which is what we're gonna be doing. If I had them put on at the factory, they'd be about $2,500 more than that. So that's why that cost is a little bit higher. Even with those costs, I think we're coming in at 100 and, I think it's $111,050 is what we're estimating on the $115,200 budget.
Any other questions, discussion?
The warranty that we got on this, because it's got the idle feature and stuff on the car where you can walk away from it, that's only a three-year warranty on them?
I think they're three-year, yep.
Three-year, 36.
Correct, yep. And the reason why we're ordering these now, we don't usually order these until February, just, just like the same situation that Public Works is seeing. When we order our last two vehicles, we ordered them, I think in late January, early February of last year, we just got them maybe a month ago and I've been told by other chiefs in the area, well, at least you got your cars, we didn't get them, they said try again next year. So I think we were really fortunate to get the two that we got this year and hopefully this order, you know, goes through and we see these at some point in 2024.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Recommend, I move that we recommend to council, Resolution 22-128-R. authorizing the purchase of two police department patrol vehicles for $87,230.
Second, you were.
Motion by Malley, second by you were. Clerk, take the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
You were?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck? Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Inayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
And that can go on to consent?
That can go on consent. We can, we can make a comment about it, because I think it's important too, because it's gonna be our first two hybrid pursuit vehicles.
My comment is every time I hear about police surplus vehicles, it makes me think of Jake and Almwood.
I was gonna say, if we couldn't get the police pursuit ones, I know they got a lot of STs, explorers floating around, but I don't know if we want to let the officers loose with 450 horse in one of those. Okay, up next would be item number 14, which is Resolution 22-117-R, authorizing paratransit subsidy agreement between the City of Otavia and Pace Transit for the Ride and Cane Program. Alderman Chancet, you have that.
I do indeed. This is the annual renewal of the highly successful program. We, it says its expire was at the end of the year, so we do need to address this tonight. This is the new subsidy agreement. For people that are not familiar with it, it's the program that operates 24 hours a day all year long. It's a very low-cost ride for people who qualify for $5 for the first 10 miles of a ride, and then just $1.50 for additional miles of those, those 10 miles. It is a vital service for low-income and seniors. And I would open it up to the group for additional discussion if there is any. I know that this year is a little special because we're getting additional credit for the COVID with that. Laura, am I leaving anything out?
No, that's it.
So I guess I would leave it to the group for discussion. Otherwise, I would, I would move that we send this to council and get this approved so we can have it in place for next year.
Second.
Motion second, any additional? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chancet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
You were?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent, Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
Thank you. Now, well, this should go on consent. I do want to promote the program as possible, so I'd actually rather have it on regular agenda. And Laura, when you're trespassing the contract, if it's possible to ask for additional sales collateral, I've looked for some and I have not seen some in downtown businesses that used to carry them, and I could not find any at Home Sid last time I was there.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Item 15, which is Resolution 22-123-R, approval of change order number one for water treatment plants, number one and two modifications. Gary?
Before we start on the water treatment plant, I just wanted to let you know that our street superintendent, Bill Callum, did text me while I was up here at the podium. When they demonstrated the new street sweeper, he said it is dramatically quieter than our existing model.
So that's even better.
It's a good. Thank you. Okay, so I'm switching topics.
So he's keeping track of you?
I'm sure they're.
He's watching.
This is very exciting to watch.
You even have your employees keeping track of you. That's good.
Switching gears to change order number one for the water treatment plant. If you recall back in September, there was a presentation that discussed the various things we encountered during rehab of the Tonka filters and the fact that we encountered extreme deterioration within those units far more than we originally anticipated. Then in October, we followed up and city council approved an amendment to the debt authorization ordinance that basically went, allowed us to go back to the state to hopefully secure more funding for the overage. This is actually the last step in that process. This approves a change order with the contractor to account for the overage in costs. This is a change order for $470,041.63. And we are recommending approval of this change order.
So that's below the 600 we talked about before, what we thought was gonna be additional?
This, yeah, this is just this change order right now.
Okay, okay, there might be other?
Yes.
Not might, you're expecting others, right?
I think that's where Jeremy had indicated there's, there's likely gonna be a fine balancing change order at the end of the project. So at that point in time, we'll account for all the pluses and minuses and bring it back.
So the money we got back from doing the wastewater treatment plan is gonna get spent on this?
But tonight, this allows us to proceed forward with, a change order which allows us then to proceed forward with payment to the contractor for the work that's already been done.
Is the, is the plant finished yet?
No, they're still working on it.
They're still working out there, okay. Anybody?
I would make a motion. We recommend Resolution number 22-123-R, approval of change order number one for the water treatment plants, number one and two modifications.
Second, you were.
Motion by Serone, second by you were. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent, Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
And you were?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
Alderman, most to your question, we're gonna plan late May into early June sometime to have a tour for city council once the project is basically.
Once it's nice out again.
And it's nice outside, yeah.
Great. Okay, and that can go on consent. Up next then would be Resolution 22-124-R, approving an agreement with Anixter Incorporated to provide metering collection system for the amount not to exceed $291,065, which includes a 10% contingency amount.
Alderman Serone? Yes, we've got a new, unique solution offered by Tantalus Systems that I'm gonna let Steve tell us about.
Thank you very much. As you, I'm sure everybody is knowing, as we're doing all of this growth and things like that, the natural attrition of changing out the meters is a, is a fact of life. So over the past 10 years or so, the electric and water divisions have been changing out to a fixed radio read system. So these are not necessarily considered smart meters, but they are meters that can be read by either a manual intervention. So that means you have a meter reader, that's a paper read meter reader that plugs a laptop in and reads the meter. Or we have some, one of our meter reading technicians drive around with a handheld reader that hits a button and reads it. So they have to do this every route that we have. So routes are built throughout the city so that billing cycles fall on, in certain days and circumstances. So we have about 600 industrial meters to replace that are still manual read where someone has to physically go up to each meter. And as, as the memo states, there's about 2,000 meters for the water department that still have to be replaced, which are a matter of just not having access during the pandemic. So we explored some options as to how to get this going for a wide variety of reasons, which I can talk about. And a lot of the systems that exist out there are full meter replacements. So after we just invested, you know, 10 years' worth of work into this, the company's gonna come by and say, well, this is our proprietary communications protocol. This is our proprietary software. Sorry, you have to change out your meters. And that's gonna put us up in the two or $3 million category level of replacement. So there is a company that has come into existence. It's a private company out of North Carolina, and they are called Tantalus Systems. And they have essentially partnered and allowed to be licensed to read the meters that we have and for, and it's essentially an overlay system. So it will turn our, I don't want to call them not smart meters, but they're just radio read meters. It will actually turn them into a sort of smart meter. So in other words, we will be able to read these things once a day as opposed to once a month. And as the system gets built out, we will also have, be able to pinpoint electric outages. We will also be able to have consistent billing cycles, which my friends in utility billing have been extremely excited to hear things about that they just push a button and the billing shows up at the end of that day. We will also eventually eliminate the position, the need to drive around to all of these meters. So another benefit that we get is having that information feed in from the industrial customers. That would be in 15-minute intervals that they would come in, since that's how they're read. And we are getting a lot of requests from industrial customers saying, why is my demand so high? What am I doing? What's happening? And that usually means that we have to have one of our technicians drive out there, download the data out of the meter, since we don't, we only have the one-month resolution in the data that comes in. So the quote for you from Tantalus is for professional services. It's basically some hardware and all the installation will be performed by our crews. The collector devices are basically about the size of this screen right here in front of me at the podium here. And we would locate them where we already have existing fiber and IT infrastructure at our substations or water, water towers or things like that. And the repeaters, also about the same size as this monitor, would mount on poles distributed throughout the city. And in areas of town where we don't have poles, such as Tanglewood or Mill Creek, or Mill Creek, please, I'm not in Geneva, Mill View, they actually have a streetlight attachment that goes right on the top, and you don't even see it. It's, it's about the size of one of these, that little camera right above Alderman Wolf's head. So really excited with the advances in technology that, that Tantalus has presented and offered, and at a really nice price point where we can take advantage of our existing infrastructure while gaining so much more information. So at that, I would just open that up to any questions or discussion.
First question I have would be, what's the, how long do you think this overlay will last?
So revenue meters typically are in the 15- to 20-year lifespan. So we just got done replacing the meters last year, I think. So we're, we're gonna start in another 10, you know, to, to begin to naturally replace them. So this, these are electronic devices and things that are, you know, designed to work out in the elements, are designed to be on the top of a streetlight. So I, I would say that the system would be at least 10 to 15 years, you know, in place. And it's mostly software-based. The components in the field are, you know, easy to come by and readily replace them.
And how long will it take to replace the 2,000 units and the 600 industrial units that need to be upgraded?
Sure. So aside from this particular project, we have a $100,000 or so metering budget that's also there. So we're gonna start this year right away. And we think that we could probably be done with those 600 in about two years. So we can get about 300 meters with that, with that amount of money. And then we'll focus on that, and that'll knock out industrial water. It's really about premise access. I don't want to speak for that department exactly, but yeah, it's just getting into somebody's houses. Electric, we're fortunate our meters are on the outside of the home and we can just, for business, and we can just change them.
Yeah, water's still about two years behind. And again, we lost 2020 and most of 2021 with the pandemic. So water trails behind a little bit.
So now we're just building a network to be able to read these from a centralized port. Like anytime you want to go on the SCADA system and read what's going on in that system, you do the same thing with this, basically.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's exactly right. So we can tie the information that comes into this into our, into both the SCADA system and to the utility billing system, right? So it's, it's, I can, instead of having to wait for someone to call me as we strategically place these things, it, it'll tell us, you know. We'll know before someone else's lights are off, hopefully, if everything works right. So that is, that's not day one, that's not year one. That's a few years down the road as we make sure that we have a nice, solid mesh and a nice, solid communications, you know, network in place. But, but that's all wireless and utilizes the majority of our existing meters that we already have.
Yeah, so I know we've already have the technology to read these as we go drive by them. But then it starts to make me, my IT security alarms go off. The, these are 100%, the radios are out, or the meters and everything, they're 100% read-only, right? There's no command or anything that could be sent to a meter to disable somebody, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's a very good question. There are, larger utilities have deployed, so let me, let me take a step back. I'm gonna throw some alphabet soup at you there. So there's, there's two types of meter reading systems. One is an AMR, which is an automated meter reading system, which is what we don't have. Automated would be what we're going to. AMI, which is the advanced metering infrastructure, that's that two-way communications. So larger utilities, which have gotten rid of all their meter readers, they do have that two-way ability with, with their meters. But we are not gonna, we're not gonna have that with ours. So what, what I learned during this project that I was not aware of is that our, our meters are constantly talking. About every five seconds, they send out their information. And it, it's just a meter ID and whatever's been used. You know, there's no customer information tied to that, to that meter. And that is encrypted. And when our meter readers go out and they push the button on their handheld, they, they hear NICOR, they hear ComEd, they hear, they hear our water, they hear, they hear everything. And they only read the meter IDs that we have programmed, which is all done by our. So that's a very interesting question, and I did learn about that too, so, thanks.
Would you also be able to like set thresholds in it that if all of a sudden on any given day their electric usage went up 50% or their, say, water meter usage went up 50% or something? That would indicate, you know, dead shore, leaks or something else going on? Be able to have that trigger there and not have to wait for, wow, why is my bill three times higher than it was?
Yes, that, that is absolutely possible. Yeah, I did think, mentioning here, usage alerts where, yes, if, if, yes, I read your water meter and the, it was, you used 30 cubic feet yesterday, but you used 200 cubic feet today. Yes, we could, we could send somebody out and take a look at that. Same with electric.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Anyone else? Anyone online have a question? Okay, if not, I would make a motion to send to council with a positive recommendation, Resolution 22-124-R, approving an agreement with Anixter to provide a metering collection system for an account, an amount not to exceed $291,065, which includes a 10% contingency amount.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado absent, Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
On Your?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you. I just would mention, too, that one thing I didn't, I just forgot to put in the memo, this does take advantage of a, of a price increase that's gonna occur the first of the year, so that was sort of one of the other reasons why I wanted to get it in right away, not to mention, I'm excited to get the data. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, I'm gonna step out for the next two.
Okay. Let the record reflect, Alderman Beck is leaving for Items 17 and 18. Item 17 is Ordinance 2262, revising Title III, Chapter III, Batavia Municipal Code, removing square footage requirements for packaged liquor retailers, revising prohibited conduct, and removing the prohibition of telephone sales for liquor license owners. And Tony?
Okay. Yeah, this is a update, some minor changes to eliminate the square footage requirement for Class B-1. It takes, strikes live performance of which is prohibited by regulations stated above, to, and add in things that are deemed obscene as defined by state law. And the last one is to just strike the telephone sales and delivery prohibition as online and that kind of ordering has become more the norm. So, open up, any questions, discussion, concerns?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask the chief, please, do you have any problem with revising the prohibitive conduct? I say that because this past weekend, we did a records check on every license holder in this town to see if they'd served minors, and the police took a minor into the place, and we had three fail. And they've all been fined already by myself as liquor commissioner, but, Chief, does this go on, prohibitive conduct? Do you know what we're talking about here? What, what are we prohibiting?
So, I think this was an issue that had come up with, was it revelry?
Yes, yes, and so, one of the things that was brought to our attention was, one of the prohibited acts was the, the showing of films depicting things which are prohibited conduct under the act. And we worked with the city attorney because that was a little bit vague as to how it would apply to, say, R-rated movies shown at the movie theater. And as we are having our movie theater come back into town expected to open this spring, we wanted to clarify that that wasn't the type of conduct that we were seeking to prohibit under the liquor code. And so, the city attorney has provided language as to how other municipalities are defining those types of films, that unless they're showing something that would be considered obscene under state law, that movie theater would not be prohibited from showing films, other films.
Any other questions, discussion, anyone online?
Chief, have you had a chance to review this for your opinion on prohibitive?
Yeah, yeah, I had worked with Laura and with the city attorney through this issue.
I only bring it up because, as you may remember, when the Comedy Vault was going to come into town, they decided they wanted, the building wasn't done, but we wanted to have an outside concert. And we let them have the outside concert, and the next thing we know, they're firing off fireworks without a permit. And then the thing that really got going was they had lights, they were shining up in the sky, and then they dropped the lights, and everybody on South Washington Avenue is calling me up mad about all these bright lights on the back of their houses at 8:00 at night, showing all this. And then the thing that really got some, I had several ministers call me because there was a lot of, they had a band out there that was using some great four-letter word language in the public in front of all these little kids. And so, you know, I had the, we had the gentleman in, Daniel was still the police chief, and we had him in here and had kind of a very strong conversation about, what do you think you're doing out here throwing all this language around? I mean, if you're in your building and people paid to get in, that's one thing, but when you're out here in the back parking lot, shining, you know, screaming in a microphone and all this, this is getting a lot of people upset. So, I put him on notice, I said, if this happens again, I'm gonna haul you in here and have a liquor hearing on you for prohibitive conduct. So, I just don't want to make sure that if, if we do this, that we're not kind of opening the space up for somebody like that to do that again.
Now, this, this only, all the prohibited conduct remains the same? In the act, the only thing that we're modifying is the displaying of films or pictures to make it more clear that films or pictures would be prohibited if they're deemed obscene under state law.
But are we removing the live performance section of it?
No, it is only, this, the live performance is another prohibited act, and this is a film depicting that which, if it was a live performance, would be prohibited. But there are things which are shown in R-rated films that if it was a live performance of that, would be prohibited under the act.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, I move that we recommend to council, Ordinance 2262, revising Title III, Chapter III of the, of the Batavia Municipal Code, removing square footage requirements for packaged liquor retailers, revising prohibited, prohibited conduct, and removing the prohibition of telephone sales for liquor license owners.
Second?
Motion by Malay, second by You're. Clerk, call a roll.
Malay?
Aye.
You're?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Beck?
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Solva?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazzi?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. And then, next is Item 18, is a discussion on amending the liquor code.
Yes, so I had sent out a copy of our liquor code, and earlier in the year, it was requested that we take a look at that. It's actually something that we've been meaning to do for quite some time now, if only because we are up to, I believe, the letter L will be the next type of liquor license, should we determine that there's another unique type of business that had not before been contemplated under our existing code. So, certainly, one of the things that I could see that would be an improvement, both for enforcement, but also to make it more clear and logical, the businesses that want to serve alcohol, is to try to reduce the number of categories of liquor license and yet try to list, you know, under those, the types of businesses that would fall under, say, four different types of liquor licenses. But, you know, I, I think otherwise, if there are other areas that you would like us to focus on, that I just want to create the opportunity for us to have a public discussion of those.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Mark? Sure, I'll go. We talked a lot about having some, during festivals and larger events like that, having more of an open carry type situation, like on River Street, and just, I thought, a lot of us wanted something like that, that would kind of make it a little easier for those restaurants and everything on River Street, so, and then during other events that might happen there.
Special events.
Special events.
The fencing is, was.
Yeah, the fencing at the, like, the Park District puts up. Like I said, I was surprised that that was there this year, because I thought we said last year, we didn't want it again, and yet it showed up. So, those are the types of things that I want to get rid of. I mean, that's not a heavily visited, Wednesday nights are not like, there's a thousand people downtown to watch a concert, it's a couple hundred, so.
So, would you like to set a limit of the number of people at an event, or are you talking about eliminating fencing around events altogether?
No, I think it depends, the size of the event. I mean, because I, Windmill City Fest, that's obviously much more risk of things getting in the wrong hands at an event like that. But like, on the smaller events, I just don't see the need for all that fencing, and it just, it, it makes it look trashy for the entire summer while that stuff is sitting out there, so I'd like to avoid that.
Is it specific to that particular event?
Yeah, but we were talking about other use cases, and I don't remember the term.
Dora.
Dora.
When speaking with Main Street, we had given the example of the Woodstock situation, where they had, have a small Dora area, and talking with Main Street, they were more interested in trying events that were, encompassed all of our downtown, that there would be certain days of the week when people could purchase liquor and just go walking around the downtown with the liquor during certain periods of time. We have seen, you know, the cases of that, where towns have done that and decided to later repeal it, because of the, the problems that were caused, but it, certainly, if it's something, you know.
To my knowledge, I don't think there are any municipalities in Illinois that allow just flat-out open carry of alcohol through their downtown areas. There are these Doras, which are the, they're restricted areas, that are still, there are still boundaries, there are still control measures in place. We did some research on this, I think Crystal Lake may have been one of the cities that had one of these areas. And very lightly-used areas, they're, you know, I guess I would describe it kind of like, people being able to take their beverages from across the street and then walk them into the restricted area of what would be like the Peg Bonson Center area. And what, what we were getting feedback-wise was, there just wasn't a lot of participation with people showing up to these areas to drink their alcohol. Some of the other issues that we're seeing, you know, had to do with litter and garbage. Obviously, I would have concerns with just, I guess, depending on what the timeframe would be on these areas, obviously intoxicated patrons. We've had complaints at, at businesses in the past of, you know, people urinating in public, so those would be the concerns that I would have with having less restriction and control on where liquor is being consumed and served.
I would, I would think the Park District, Park District events on Wednesdays is a great example of where to maybe start. I can't think of any other event, or I don't know what Main Street has in mind in particular, but that's an example of it, it's a family, I mean, I don't even know how much booze they sell there. It's a small amount, but I think it would be more appealing. The venue would be more appealing. We allow them, and some of these events, like the Park District and Main Street, part of the problem is the cost of fencing has gotten prohibitive. And if there's an event where you can justify that it's not a, you know, an Oktoberfest or, you know, something that's a late-night booze fest, that maybe we can be a little more lenient on the fencing requirements, then I would support that.
Yeah, another one I can think of is when the half marathon used to run through Batavia, that, that was, Sam Adams was a big sponsor, and so you get a beer after the half marathon. I did it, it was hard to drink a beer after running a half marathon, but.
Really?
I wanted so much water, the beer was not very appealing, but I drank it anyway. That's another example of something that is like, it's such a short event, and maybe that's part of it, too, because Windmill City Fest, I mean, it's multiple days, but something that's gonna be going on for a couple hours, seems like a perfect way to, to utilize that.
I would say the one that I've noticed, and I've watched it, because I've been down there almost every Saturday, was at the.
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market. I mean, we allow them to sell screwdrivers, Bloody Marys, whatever they're selling, you know, at noon, up till noon, and I, I have yet to see, really see somebody walk away from there with a drink. Don't see them walk across the bridge or walk, you know, away and leave. It just stays confined to the area, which I think is the same thing that would happen behind us. I.
But what happened for the Farmer's Market on North River Street was associated with the outdoor public dining tables and people being able to.
Right.
Sell and have people sit out at those tables, but, like you say, that could be considered one of these.
One of the areas, and I think, too, it, it might be something that we think about, how do we handle, and this I'm sure would be something to ask General's Office, would be, how do we handle that for, like, say, those two areas to start with? You know, as a test, if we make those two areas.
Would we make it the two areas, or could we just consider it on an event-by-event basis, because it's time of day, number of people? Both of those places could have events that are at, during the night, with sufficient number of people where you would want to have the perimeter fenced there?
Yeah, I mean, I even think of like, the, the nights, and I know it was with the outside dining and stuff on, on River Street, was you'd have it pretty much throughout the night, whether it was Sunday evenings for bluegrass that was out in the street, or trivia nights, everything that went on over there, there was always people outside that had a drink, no matter if they were at a table in front of the business they were getting it from, or if they were sitting on one of our little park benches at the other end of the block. You know, it, it kind of stayed, to me, stayed contained over there. And that's the kind of thing I think we're trying to promote, is to be able to do that without having to go through and put fences up so that you can have bluegrass music on a Sunday night, or you can have a Thursday night trivia, or whatever you've got going on there, but keep it contained in those areas.
I think what we had, when we talked about North River Street last, though, for those types of events, because we're, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll have this on a future discussion since we've received that I.DOT permit, when it gets converted next year, year or two, the one way that those businesses would have their own perimeter. So, they will be required to perimeter their own areas where they are serving alcohol.
Okay. And that would make more sense for that.
If we do move forward with the quote-unquote "Dora" situation over here on the Wednesday nights or Saturday, the Farmer's Market, you know, one way that it could be managed is whoever's selling the alcohol, they also have to sell the wristband, or give a wristband with it, so that it is obvious those who are walking around downtown, who basically is carrying the alcohol, and that it's a requirement to wear that wristband while walking in the downtown areas with. And I, I think that is how some of the other townships are handling their Doras, are with wristbands.
Yeah, because I noticed that that's, that's one way, different festivals I've been to in different towns.
I mean, we do it at Windmill Fest, yeah.
That you have that in that way, it's not you go in and somebody goes in and buys two beers, walks out and hands them to somebody over the fence, or whatever, you have the wristband, and you're the one that's responsible for it.
Okay.
And the other thing I was gonna ask about on our liquor licenses, what do we do when, say, a business decides they had a beer and wineless license, and then they want to do the all liquor one? Is it, do they have to go through the whole process again to change that or add to that?
I'm not sure how that's been handled, but I don't think so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that they can, they can make a transition.
Just pay the difference.
Pay the difference, okay. Because that's the other thing I think should be available, if somebody decides, you know, they, they go from selling beer to, you know, having, say, a taproom or an establishment that they want to change, and they want to be able to offer more than just that.
We check the same things in terms of a background check of the individuals involved, whether they're selling beer, wine, or liquor.
Any of the licenses, they say the same.
And that's the thing that takes the longest with the application process.
I just wanted to make sure they didn't have to go back through that again to change to a different style license.
Yeah, it's pretty common.
Yeah.
It happens where we'll have somebody that decides they want a certain overlay license during the middle of a year, and it's, it's just a matter of filling out the paperwork and paying the small fee and.
Whatever the difference is, okay. Leah?
I have a few other questions. Sure. Past the Dora discussion.
Yes.
I mean, it was a thrilling afternoon reading through the liquor code, so.
[laughing]
It still is stated in here that liquor sales happen at 9:00 a.m., and I know during COVID that that time was moved till, to 8:00 a.m. at Class B locations. Is that permanent for 8:00 a.m.?
No, 8:00 a.m. is not permanent. What we decided with the mayor's emergency orders was that those would stay in place for as long as the governor's emergency declaration stays in place. So, those will automatically expire when the emergency declaration expires.
And is there a reason to not keep it at 8:00 a.m.?
It is up to council to change that if they so wish.
Because I, I wasn't actually part of that discussion during COVID with the change, but I, my understanding was it was done for the senior citizens who enjoy shopping earlier in the day often, and sometimes they go out, you know, to buy wine for their week and are unable to in the morning. So, personally, I don't see a big issue between 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. for our residents. So, that would be something that I would be open to moving it, or keeping it at 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
That was one question I had, and then the other one was, it actually has to go back to the movies, if I was understanding this correctly, it said that liquor sales at a movie theater for a movie that is G or PG-rated cannot be before 8:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm just saying, as a family who often goes to movies with my family at other cities, and we do sometimes purchase alcohol, that that is very inconvenient. And so, wondering if that is something that Batavia wants to keep, because I know that local surrounding movie theaters do not have that.
That's up to all of you, it's a policy decision, so.
That's probably coming to you fairly soon with the new movie theater.
Right.
Yes, and that's why I bring it up, yes.
He's called and talked to me a couple times, but he's trying to get into his mind all the things he's going to do out there.
Yeah.
And he's got a lot of different ideas. I mean, he's gonna have a couple rooms that are gonna be for like 80th birthday parties or memorial receptions after a funeral, you know, he's got a lot of different ideas. Somebody wants to have a big birthday party for their kid, and he's, so he, he knows, but he, he's trying to get together how his liquor package should be put together so he doesn't cause himself or the city any trouble.
Those were the two that I was gonna say, relationship to the movie theater. The one before that that says it can't be sold more than an hour before the first movie, you know, if they have a movie not scheduled to start until 4:00 in the afternoon, but they have a 10:00 a.m. party scheduled there, would that then prohibit them from selling alcohol during that timeframe? alcohol during that timeframe? So I think those two, I think they're what, five or six A and B, I think we should, those are two that I think we should change.
Yeah, he said he'd like to come in and talk with us before we do it because he's got some ideas about it.
And then I'm imagining that when we make it simpler and there's four different types of liquor license, that the the manner in which they're able to sell will be generalized in a way so that you don't have these types of.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And this was a little confusing. I think I may have just not understood fully all the information about happy hours and whether like what is allowed or not allowed during a happy hour.
And I recently reviewed that language with one of our business owners and the idea is not to confine a discount to a small period of hours so that people load up on liquor within a short period of time. But if you wanted to say there's a discount on margaritas on Tuesday, you are free to say margaritas are cost you less on Tuesdays than they do other days of the week. You just can't say a happy hour like we're going to sell 50 cent beers, chug all that you can between five and seven PM. That was that that created a problem in the past.
Didn't the state address that?
Right. And I think that's why most of the ones that I've seen are all like you said, the, you know, margaritas are Tuesdays.
Right, it's all a full day.
Well, drinks on Wednesdays and.
Or if it's happy hour, it's food only.
Right.
Is what I come across. It's discounted food. Which I do still pile up on as much.
Get your monies worth.
Right.
Okay, great suggestions. Thank you. So we'll be coming back. Changes.
Anybody else? Anybody online have any comments?
Can I throw one more thing out there?
Yes.
Sure. We do have some communities around us, Warrenville, Aurora, North Aurora, that have one AM bar closings on Mondays through Thursdays. And I know this would only impact a couple, maybe one actually at this point bar in our town. We when we do have problems in town between one and two o'clock, it's generally at the bars that are still open between one and two. And a lot of times it's because we're getting the patrons that are coming here from Aurora, North Aurora, Warrenville. And so we're seeing them come into our town already having probably drank well enough and then end up having issues between that one and two o'clock hour. They do those municipalities I mentioned do go back up to a two o'clock bar closing time on Friday nights and Saturday nights. I just wanted to throw that out there as something for you to discuss. St. Charles, what they do, they have a midnight closing, but then you can as an owner buy, I guess, overlay licenses, which are extremely expensive. It's $2,300 a year to stay open those extra two hours. And I'm not suggesting that we do that, but that's why their bars can be open till two o'clock in the morning because they pay that extra $2,300 to stay open that late. I just wanted to throw that out there. We don't have very many businesses left in town that are open that late. When we do see problems during those hours, it's usually because people are well over served by two o'clock.
Would you propose just shutting down at one from Sunday to Thursday?
Yeah, that would mirror what those other communities around us are doing.
Right. Worth a discussion.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I and we're seeing problems on Monday nights.
When when we do, it's usually because there's a crowd that will come up from.
From another wow.
Yeah, other areas that have shut down for them.
I'd love, I mean, I think that's worth having a discussion, but I'd love some data on that.
Yep, I can see if I can pull some statistics on those issues that we see between that one and two o'clock hour.
I could say from experience, it used to be you'd leave Batavia, go to Geneva, St. Charles a little bit later, and then you end up in Elgin because they were up until four o'clock in the morning. And that's where all the problems occurred were from two o'clock to four o'clock in Elgin.
And you were there.
Oh, I was watching.
We've been experiencing issues during COVID when I think St. Charles was the first to close earlier.
Right.
And it shifted issues down to City of Batavia.
Right. My recollection was during that timeframe, we ended up having discussions with Geneva and St. Charles and some of the other communities. Hey, let's try and get on the same page here because it's causing problems and places that are staying open later.
And and during the transfer between communities, that's when you also have the accidents.
On the roads, yeah.
Because somebody, hey, let's go to the other town. Got two more hours there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. A lot of good feedback to use.
Okay. And now we move on to project status.
Okay, for project status, I did allude to the fact that we have finally received notice from I dot that the one way conversion of North River Street is approved with a few minor revisions that are needed. And also, the city has received about 40 plus surveys from the Carriage Crest subdivision. We had the surveys were intended to provide the city with updated information about any resident flooding concerns that have occurred since the last time that the city reached out to them back in 2019. Our government center remodeling project continues to remain on schedule. We're anticipating this this first phase of work will be completed by late February and work on the second phase will then commence immediately following and hopefully we'll finish that up in early summer. The Water Division staff met with Engineering Enterprises to kick off a process of developing the city's surface water protection plan. It's something that's required by the EPA and we expect that plan to be completed in July of 2023. Wanted to ask City Council if you would be amenable to having a meeting on December 27th or if you would prefer to cancel that meeting. It would just mean that we're probably going to have a pretty full schedule come January 10th when we have our first committee of the whole meeting in January. So up to you if you prefer to cancel and have a big meeting or actually meet that night.
I think my experience has been that if we have that meeting between Christmas and New Year's, the attendance is sometimes very stretched. If there's other things going on or if aldermen are going out of town or they have family here from someplace else. I mean, it creates a kind of a problematic atmosphere during that week. If it's something you need to do, you need to do it. But I'm not sure that we really have anything on the agenda right now.
So if we can push it.
Yeah, if I mean, if it's a couple items or something that's not time sensitive, I think we we can do that.
Okay.
Have a problem with that.
Very good. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that a resident who is lives adjacent to the Mahoney Creek Detention Project reached out to me and asked if he could have some time on a future committee of the whole meeting that he and us of other residents would like to come in and discuss the noise issues that they're experiencing post that project. And so we're going to put that on the January 10th agenda for discussion. And then also, we added the executive session this evening. For those who are participating online, if you could check your email to make sure that you received an invitation to that executive session. And if not, if you could let me know and I could resend it to you.
Okay. Any questions for Laura? Okay, does anybody have any others? Nick?
I was just thinking of a potential discussion with with our city attorney of the recusal process. The fact that Abby has to sit down for every liquor discussion, the Aldi thing. We're recruiting things and I'd like clarification if that's really necessary.
Sure.
Because at the same time, like Dave Brown and Mike were in the construction area, they didn't recruit themselves from every construction. They're they actually had great input, you know, we want some of that expertise.
Well, I think too, it would be good, probably a great refresher for everybody to know what an abstention is, what recusal is, and what stepping out of the meeting and not actually being part of the discussion at all is. I mean, there are distinct differences to each one of those. And it would probably be a good idea just to get a refresher from trying to leave it if it's just, you know, one page email so that we know that. Maybe show up at one meeting and then answer questions if anybody has any questions. But you're you're right. I think that's a good thing to do. And I think sometimes too, it's also good for the public to maybe know that, to understand why somebody leaves during a question or, you know, leaves during a discussion that, you know, that that's obvious why that is and it's not. There's no shroud of secrecy or anything weird with it. It's just what we know we need to do.
Sounds good.
And while he's at it, if you do a write up, maybe one for executive session of when we have to.
Oh, that's fair.
We discuss that every time we go.
I know.
We know what goes on there. It's okay.
Alan's.
Yeah, I'm the one that has to stick my neck out. If it's wrong, then I'm going to jail. I don't know.
Keenan has another.
Keenan?
How far away are we from Culvers and Moca opening up? Do we know?
Oh, two miles.
I am excited because we can ride bikes with the kids to Culvers and.
Yes.
Culvers, I think is planning for around the first of March.
Yeah, they've said about February, March, depending on how everything gets on. Moca, I don't have an exact date, but it's probably then or sooner because Moca is almost done.
Yeah. Chicken salad chick had it postponed. They were supposed to do it this morning, but the corporate didn't like that they didn't have enough employees. So they've moved it back now, I believe, to the eighth of January.
January 10th, I think maybe.
Yeah, the 10th, I think is what it is.
Then we also. What is the new subdivision back in Sam's Club?
Windy Creek.
Windy Creek.
The models are open.
They're open, right?
Models are open and they're making sales. Yeah.
Good. Okay. Be interesting to see if we're getting any any people from downtown Chicago or any other places looking to remote in from somewhere, you know.
Yeah.
Some new families, new couples.
Mm hmm.
College grads, stuff like that.
I think it'll be interesting too to see what the percentage of the single floor.
They have both single family and two story units available.
Single store and.
Two story.
So it'll be interesting to see how many of those start out there, what the mix is. And he had a hand up.
Yeah, Dan, did you want to make a comment?
It would just say in regard to the recusal, I know that I had issues when I was in banking. I guess the easiest advice is, is the thing you're about to vote on, something that could be perceived as something that could benefit you or your employment. And if that is ever the case, just simply leaving the room is enough to remove that that issue. So I'm in banking. Do I have to leave every time we discuss paying a bill? Of course not. If we're about to, you know, work on a contract where they could benefit my company, yeah, probably not going to vote on that.
Yeah, I I literally, my company is is working with Wazio. So I suppose like, yeah, maybe I should talk about that.
Sure. Do you benefit directly? So another example the bank gave me was, what if I wanted to work at a bank in Batavia? Well, if a new business comes in, is it perceived that I would benefit? And would they come to me at the bank in Batavia because they perceived they would get better influence or something just because, oh, I'm going to someone who's with counsel? Then to remove that, I just simply don't apply at banks in Batavia. That's all.
Okay. No other others. I would ask for a motion to go into executive sessions to discuss personnel and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ewer, second by Solfa. Roll call, please.
Ewer?
Aye.
Surround?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Back?
Aye.
Kamali?
Aye.
Chanzer?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
All right. And we do not expect any.